.......................................... All right, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. Start with our attendance. Misty Cottle.
Here.
Jeff Efton.
Here.
Janthrog Morton.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Kira Hungate.
Here.
Don Rowlands.
Here.
Joe Towor is absent. Deanna McKnight.
Here.
City Attorney and City Clerk of both the present. So, first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. We need to make a better change to that. The first change is item one under new business. We need to change that from approved subcontractor contracts to enter, to allow the mayor to enter into negotiations for those contracts. And the next item is item nine, approval of police and court items to be destroyed. We've attached an ordinance to that to be approved through ordinance.
Resolution.
Resolution, I'm sorry, resolution. I wrote ordinance. Do we have a motion regarding our agenda?
I made the motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next is the approval of our minutes from our January 8 meeting. Are there any changes that anyone saw in those minutes that we need to discuss? Do we have a motion regarding that?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as now.
Motion second.
Motion second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next is our public forum. In our public forum, we allow two minutes per speaker to address the city council with any comments, questions, or concerns that you have. The council may ask questions and enter discussion with you, but we won't take any action on items brought up during the public forum. So, would anyone like to address the council tonight? Well, we've had a lot of Facebook discussion this week, so I'll take public forum and make a couple comments myself. So, a lot of things have been said over Facebook over the past couple, three weeks, ranging from accusations that the city is falsifying meter reads, which is the one I take the most offense with. I think everybody in the room understands the city doesn't read meters. Employees read meters. So, that accusation is basically an accusation that one of our city employees is stealing. I have seen no proof of that, and I've seen no specifics as to what employee is engaging in theft. But I would encourage anybody that has that evidence to bring it to me because I would like to investigate that. The ringleader of that whole mess is apparently not here tonight, and that aggravates me. I have a lot of pride in city employees, and the fact that someone would accuse them of stealing really aggravates me and then not to show up. Couple other things, though. A lot of stuff dealing with our water and sewer, ranging from our fees to our I-N-I. That was part of the accusation, that we were falsifying meter reads to make our I-N-I look better. If you know what I-N-I is, you know how insane that comment is. I-N-I and our meter reading do not go hand in hand. We're going to discuss under our public works tonight, our water and sewer fees, and you're going to see that the council's got that in their packet. West Fork is right in the middle of every city around here as far as our fees go. Our sewer fees are going up. That's a fact. That's something we can't, we can't get around. That's something that the city has little control over. Those sewer fees were set by the state of Arkansas. We had absolutely nothing to do with the fees that are going to be charged for the sewer. That's just how it is. Their loaning is $10 million, and they're forgiving $4.5 million of that. Because of that, they took some liberty to tell us what we would charge for sewer. What were some of the other?
Bicycle.
Bicycles at the park. Thank you, Misty. So, that took me five minutes to talk to Christie about where that sign came from. Another five minutes spent with Chad. The city in no way is looking to write a kid a ticket for riding a bicycle at the park. And as a matter of fact, Chief Nelson says that we've never written a ticket, that he knows of, for a kid on a bicycle to park. He did state that part of that came to be because there was a group of citizens who came that used the park to walk, and they were being ran over by teenagers on their bicycles. At that time, they came to the council. I wasn't here. Maybe some of you guys were, I don't know. It's been about 10 years ago, and wanted to know if we could do something about it. There was no ordinance. We couldn't cite anyone if they did run over someone walking at the park. So, we put a sign in place, put an ordinance in place, so that if there is an issue, then we do have some teeth. We can cite someone for basically being disruptive at the park and running over someone. But Chief Nelson assured me that his officers have plenty to do without checking for bicycles at the park. If there's not a complaint from a walker, then we're not doing anything about it. We're not looking for that. Chief, how many tickets, how many citations or calls did you guys get on this front?
We went on 394 calls and wrote 104 citations.
So, the police department's busy without chasing kids on bicycles. I don't think Chief Nelson is going to chase anybody on bicycles.
Absolutely not.
What else, Misty?
I can't, that's all I know.
Can anybody else think of something that was, we've been accused of being...
That's really the main, too.
Okay. And I want everybody, we've got some new people here, some new faces tonight. I want you to know, we're as transparent as we can be. If you have a question, please call Christie or myself, one of your council members. Come to a meeting. I've made this statement several times on Facebook and here. Facebook for the city is a one-way communication. We use it to get information out to citizens, but we do not have the staff to sit on Facebook and try to keep answers at the top of those posts. I'm not sure how it works. I'm not on Facebook, but my understanding is usually when we put something on Facebook, it gets buried rather quickly. And we don't, we just, we don't have that staff. We're not going to conduct our business on Facebook. Our business is conducted here, period. Having said all that, would anyone like to ask questions or comments to the council?
How much are the...
Come on up and talk to us. Tell us who you are and what your address is.
Jimmy Forrest, 166 Ann Street. How much are the sewer rates going up?
That is a good question. Isaac, do you remember off the top of your head? Here it is. So, the sewer rates are going up. What we're doing is we're raising them in four increments. The state has allowed us to do that, okay? And they're essentially doubling, and that is just sewer. That is not water. So, it is currently $15.75 is the minimum rate.
Now, how, how are we going to charge for sewer? Because what it looks like on the bill most of the time, they just take whatever your water is.
That's correct.
And that's what your sewer is.
And that's, that is how sewer is metered around the state. They use the water bill, and I get it because I pay the same bill.
Right.
And a lot of my water doesn't go in the sewer, but that is the standard for measuring sewer. So, is it, is it right for us all the time? It's not? It's just, that's the way everyone does it, and we don't have a meter to meter the sewer.
And I was also wondering, we have issues with plumbing through there. Seems like there's a lack of flow.
Of sewer or water?
Sewer.
Okay.
Well, and water, as a matter of fact.
So, do you have, you have reduced water pressure there as well?
Yes.
Okay. And so, are you experiencing stop-ups or...
Just things won't flush down.
Okay.
We'll go with that. That sounds the best way.
And so, I think, and Isaac will update us on this, but we do have a planned upgrade to a line that is down there in that neighborhood?
Yeah, I've noticed that there's, look like they're fixing to start doing something there.
So, the engineer's been out. We've been trying to find some, what we know is we're getting some groundwater into our sewer system, and we're trying to find that because Fayetteville is going to charge us for every gallon of water they treat, whether it's sewer or groundwater. So, Isaac and his group are, that's their focus for the next two years, is to eliminate that, and they have found a spot in West Fork Acres. They've been running cameras through the lines, and they found a spot there and another one a little bit further south of Ann Street that they're going to be working on soon. And hopefully that will alleviate your problem.
All right, I appreciate it.
Hang on to answer the rest of your question. So, the base rate is currently $15.75 for sewer. It's going to, it will end up at $45 as a base rate.
Okay.
Over two years, period?
Over, over two years. We're going to, we're going to raise it $7 every six months, roughly $7 every six months instead of just a huge, huge increase. And so, I don't think you were here, I've said this at a couple of meetings, and I want to say, make sure you're here. I'm aggravated by this. I have a grandmother who's on social security as her income.
Right.
She's already paid for the sewer in this town once, and she's going to pay for it a second time. It's going to get her harder than it's going to get me necessarily.
Right.
And for that, I apologize to all of our senior citizens, but I didn't have, I didn't have a choice in it. We've argued the fact. We've tried to negotiate with them, and there is still some hope that if we can get this I-N-I under control in the next two years, these rates will never get to that, or at least if they do get to it, they will start to come back down.
All right, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for coming. Would anyone else like to address the council?
Well, for somebody that does not know...
Paula, come on up. I'm sorry, ma'am, come up and tell us who you are.
What is a I-N-I?
That's a good question.
Inhibition and infiltration.
Inflow and infiltration. So, and it's I and I. Someone corrected me on that. I thought it was I and I. But it's, it's inflow and infiltration of groundwater into the sewer system. Isaac, I told you that might come up tonight.
I think you said either way, Martin, although...
You probably can't, probably not.
So, does that basically mean that the pipes...
Come on up here. Come on up here.
Whoa!
I know, come on.
So, does that basically mean...
What's your name?
Nancy Lewis. Does that basically mean that the pipes that are in the ground, I have holes in them, and the waters from the ground is going in?
Could be, yes. It could be, it could be a faulty joint.
Because like our yard is a lake.
So, so, yes, there's a couple of things. So, I think Isaac found out in West Fork Acres what they think is a crushed pipe. It looks like the ground under it has settled, and the pipe has settled with it, and so it's likely cracked there. A lot of this pipe in West Fork, most of it was put in in the early 70s. And so, you know, when I think of sewer pipe, I think of the white PVC pipe, but it's actually an older, you know, metal and, what do they call it, ductile or something, Isaac?
Yeah.
So, it, it hasn't, it's held up well for, you know, 60 years. But, but yeah, and a lot of it is just at the joints, the seal around those joints. That pipe just one pushes into another, and a lot of it is, those seals are bad, and water gets in there.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else for us?
No, thank you for clarifying that, that it's not going up $200 for most people?
No, it's not.
Appreciate that.
Should be shot.
Right. Right. Yeah. So, the city attorney made a good, a good point. He was saying that if you don't change your oil in your car for 50,000 miles, you're going to buy a new engine. And that's, that's kind of where the city is with the sewer plant. The engineer, Nick's in the back. This is one of the questions I asked Nick, this has been a couple of years ago, but how long should a sewer plant last? And they're typically designed for about 30 years. The West Fork plant's been in service since the early 70s, so it's extended, you know, it's made it its lifetime and then some. Our, our upgrade to the, the city plant is expected to last roughly 30 years, correct, Nick? I keep pushing him on that. But that's, that's the expectation. That's not just in West Fork, that's around the country. So, so that's kind of where we are. And this isn't, I think there's a misconception out there that the city of West Fork has just ignored this. This actually started almost 12 years ago is when they started looking into this, and it, that's a poor excuse, I get it, but, but the city hasn't just been sitting here. It's just been a long process trying to get the state, the state's involved with this. There's a lot of environmental agencies that are involved in it. Just getting these loans approved has taken, they were on, just trying to get the loans, I've been mayor for two years, and that was already in process for two years when I came in. So, the design of the plant, they actually had, so everyone knows, we had three designs that, that the state chose from. One was rehabilitating our current plant where it's at, making changes that would allow us to continue to use the plant at the same location. Another was to build a new plant north of town, and the third was to tie on to the Fayetteville system. The reasons behind why we chose the Fayetteville system were, one was cost. It was cheaper, it was cheaper, I believe, upfront and over the long term. One of the big issues now is our sewer dumped straight into the White River. That's a huge environmental concern. The permits for that are, they're trying to limit those permits to where you're discharging it straight into a waterway. And so, that's, that's part of it. If you'll, if you'll look across the nation, you'll see that a lot of small towns are, when they have to do sewer upgrade, that's the, that's the course that they're taking, they're tying into a major municipality system. One of the exceptions is Decatur's building a system right now. They're building a new plant, and they're actually building a plant, but I don't know that they have, logistically, I don't know that they can tie into like a Bentonville or somebody. I don't think it's feasible. So, that's, that's kind of how we got to, to this, this point. That's why we're tying into Fayetteville. And we will have public hearings on that. I think that was another issue or topic of discussion was that I'd mentioned we're going to have public hearings, and we are. It's not that we're trying to get around them. It's a requirement that we have those, but it's, it's also a multi-step. So, Fayetteville has to approve a sewer contract. We have to approve a sewer contract. It had, our sewer contract had to be revamped so that Fayetteville would accept what we have. Their, their regulations are a little bit more stringent than what we have in West Fork. So, the state's been involved in that, the city of Fayetteville, city of West Fork, but we do have dates, hard dates now set for, for both a public hearing on our sewer ordinance and a public hearing on the sewer upgrade itself. And so, there, when we, when we have those, we'll have, Nick, you're going to have all three designs there, correct? So, you'll be able to look at, at the three designs that, that were, came up, you know, that they came up with and proposed, as well as there'll be question and answers for, for anything concerning the, the actual project as, as we'll, we'll move forward with it. So, one other thing I think before we move on, somebody, ma'am, you came in. Did you want to address the council? Okay. So, just to give kind of a breakdown, because I think somebody said that, that they, they called the city, and the next month their water bill went up 100 gallons. Just for a little bit of clarification, 100 gallons on your water bill is 79 cents. So, I was just a little aggravated on the whole theft thing out there on water bills, but, so I have 79 cents sitting on the corner there. If that, if you're here and you feel like the city wronged you on that 100 gallons. And I promise you guys, if you will call myself, the council, or anyone at the city...
I actually did call someone at the city.
Yes.
And nobody ever called me back. So, that's why I made the comment, I made that comment.
You made that comment?
I sure did.
And so, I don't know...
And it is irritating. When I do have a question, and I call the city and ask someone to call me back, and it gets blown off, or they call somebody else and say, oh, this is the problem, don't flush your toilet.
You've been told that by a city employee?
No, I was told that by my property manager.
So, we don't have anything to do with the property manager, but I can assure you that if you're having a problem, somebody from the city better be coming to check it out.
I called the city, nobody called me back.
Okay.
I called the city myself and...
Are you, are you still having troubles?
Yeah.
Because I have, someone will be there tomorrow.
Absolutely. That's what, I mean, he just said, that we have no water pressure whatsoever, and if we, if you're boo, you have to flush it five or six times.
Okay, and so...
And swirls and round and around and around.
We, we can address that to a certain extent.
That's what I wanted, and I, and I, nobody called me back.
And so, just understand this, that, and I'm not making an excuse for nobody calling you back, because there is not one for that, but we, we are responsible from where it comes to the street.
Right.
Same with pressure and, and the flow, and so...
So, it's kind of like a blame game. It wasn't their fault, it wasn't their fault, and I'm stuck in the middle, having to flush my toilet 20 times, and I can't run my dishwasher and my sink at the same time.
And so, we can definitely, Isaac, will you check our water pressure tomorrow and see if there's an issue there? So, we will do that, and if, if you will leave your number with Isaac or Christie, they'll give you a call and let you know what, what the pressure is and what we need to do going forward, if it's something the city can do, okay?
And I did have a question on that. When she said that her yard was like a lake, is that year-round or just right now?
It's...
It's constantly damp.
It's constantly damp. Even in the day of summer, it was damp.
And that's, that's a low spot down there.
Right. And I understand that, but I mean...
Even periods when, I mean, we'd have no rain, it would still...
Yeah.
I mean, we just moved back, and it's been straight...
Okay.
Crazy.
All right.
And we're thinking about buying property here, and it kind of makes me wonder if I really want to.
Okay.
You know?
Fair enough.
I mean, I'm from here, you'll know that. At home, I've lived here my whole life, just about, and the things that have been said and done are very, it's disturbing at some points that people take things to a, a level when they don't, they want to start things and then don't show up.
Right, it's aggravating, it's aggravating.
It's aggravating.
I've, I've been mayor two years, and I've complained about two things in those two years.
Yeah.
One is, is the Facebook post, that people just automatically assume that, you know, the city is, is trying to do something to harm them, and two, that people will not come and talk to us. I enjoy, this is the best part of the meeting for me, is conversing with people, so, but I will have Isaac check the pressure.
That was my biggest complaint, was that I called the city, I called the property manager, and nobody wanted to take the responsibility for it, and I can't, I don't own it, you know?
We will let you know, we'll let you know what the pressure is tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I'll speak.
Tell us your name.
My name's William McMullin. I live on 206 Riverwood. I'm going to show my ignorance on, on the topic here a little bit, and I do apologize ahead of time.
Do not, sir.
I know that there's a lot of interest going on with our, our sewer treatment plant and whatnot, and of which I've paid close attention, and you've answered a lot of my questions I have already. You have, you told us that in two years' time, we'll have about a $45 increase on our sewer rate.
Yes, sir.
After two years. Since sewer's only half of that, would that mean that the $45, that would be $90 with our sewer and water?
No, so the water is not going up.
Okay.
The rate will stay the same it is.
All right.
On water. So, we'll still have a base rate of $15.75 or $15.79 for water.
Right, right. On top of that, you also mentioned that the sewer contract with Fayetteville, that's one of the things that we're discussing about doing, is pumping it to Fayetteville to let them utilize their facilities there. And when it comes time for Fayetteville to take our sewage, is that the contract that the West Fork will have to make with Fayetteville to take our sewage?
So, Fayetteville is...
And then will that be then charged to West Fork?
So, Fayetteville is approving the sewer contract tonight.
Okay.
Well, I'd say they're approving their voting on it tonight, whether or not to accept it, the same as we are.
Right.
And so, that $45, that $45 bill is, it includes our, our, our cost here for the debt service.
Right.
And it also includes our expected treatment at Fayetteville.
Okay, okay.
So, so what we know is, we have a, we have an idea of the, the amount of sewage that we'll be sending them, okay? Just based on what we're treating currently.
Sure.
And at the current rate, it's, it's going to be $4.85 per 1,000 gallons, I think. Don't hold me to the exact number, but roughly $4.85 per 1,000 gallons is what they will charge us to treat the sewage.
Okay, and that's why it's so important to find out where this groundwater infiltration situation is coming from, because we don't want to obviously pay for water that's just coming in from the ditch somewhere.
Yeah, the less we send, the, the less we're charged, so...
Okay. How much, how far is the city of West Fork going to go into as far as finding places where that infiltration is occurring? And is it just in the West Fork Acres where sewer problems are, you know, known already? Or is it going to be, you know, throughout town, same...
We, part of this, when this first started, Arkansas ANRC said, hey, you guys have identified an issue in West Fork Acres. So, we rebuilt that entire infrastructure in West Fork Acres. All of that got replumbed. But they have tested, how many feet of pipe, Nick? Do you remember off the top of your head?
Where's that, which part?
In, in the town itself.
Oh, how much did they TV originally? The original study, we did about between 3,500, 4,000 foot, because it was hammered, and then West Fork Acres was another, that was over 5,000 foot in itself, but we TVed and replaced like Elmwood, Northwood, all those. We didn't, Riverwood, we didn't.
Yeah, Riverwood's newer now.
It's newer, right.
But all of it was completely replaced, including service lines over the half.
I remember when all that happened.
Over 100 houses were...
So, what they, what they've done, they've broke West Fork into four quadrants, and they've identified the, the biggest inflows. What they do is they, they stick, it's called a flow meter. It measures the, the rate that different water comes up in the pipe. And so, in particular, they, they've done this when it's raining, so that they can see during a rain event, it rained X amount of inches, and the flow increased by this amount to try to narrow this down into, to smaller sections so that they could focus in more detail. And so, we currently have three areas identified that are most likely problems, yes.
Most possible, yeah.
And so, yes, it's, it's not, it's not something that's stopping, it's not something that's just in one area, but it is across the city.
But we are taking steps to fix it.
We have, we have narrowed it down to more precise areas.
Thank you very much for your time.
Hey, thank you. Come back and see us sometime.
I will.
Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public forum and move into our business reports. Up first, Planning Commissioner Walter Kornish.
Evening, as usual. Not a whole lot. Unfortunately, we're down another member, so we're, we're back to five commissioners. So, if anybody here would like to put in an application, that'd be great. Let's see, what else? So, we made some pretty, a little bit of headway on our conditional use permit application process. Had some good ideas on what we could change there, and so hopefully have some headway on that pretty soon. Jeff Hawkins also is coming down from regional planning to give more insight into his proposal he gave back whenever, and to our new members, and so hopefully that'll also give us a jump start on getting some updates going. And that's, that's about all. Our meeting's this upcoming Thursday. And that's, that's about all. Our meeting's this upcoming Thursday, this next Thursday, third Thursday. So please attend. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next is our librarian, Shannon Reed, our new librarian. Has everyone had a chance to meet Shannon?
Thanks for coming by, for those who did the other day. It's really nice. And so we've been working on cleaning, organizing, and going through all items in the library. We've gone through all areas to make sure that anything that has been misplaced is properly cataloged or withdrawn from the system. We've withdrawn nine hundred and ten items in January and the majority of this withdrawal is our entire VHS collection, but also includes our nonfiction and fiction books that are no longer relevant. I believe y'all have the packet there to pre-later. Okay. We've already started with our DVD collection and children's, and I say this because we want to organize everything in February and then begin to start packing up in March. Our website is in the process of being updated. We will hopefully start to see the updates by the end of next week. And I've talked to the West Fork High School about promoting a teen advisory board. And the library will have to give these teens an opportunity to volunteer at the library. Teens that do not qualify for the teen advisory board, most likely due to age and that hasn't been finalized yet, are still encouraged to apply to volunteer at the library. And we've been working on a summer program. It will be seven weeks, most likely Wednesdays at ten AM and June fifth through July seventeenth. And we've already started to book someone for the beginning and a big bash for the end for the community. Those are my updates.
Any questions for Shannon?
Is it her?
So for, yes, she is. For those of you who haven't taken an opportunity to sit down with her, she has great visions for the library. I've been very encouraged talking to her, watching her work with the other library staff. She's shown great leadership down there. And I'll say that the, the other staff have really looked to her for leadership. She, you have an ability, you're a natural leader, Shannon.
Thank you.
I encourage you guys to stop by and see what she's done down there. The place is clean, it looks great. And they're getting prepared for, for the big construction project.
Yes. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Next, Paulette Welch with our courts.
Court's been busy. Isaac came by one day and said, you might want to start packing up a few things. We're going to start moving you guys pretty soon. Of course, we're going to run into a flying panic, but we're okay now. They've settled me down. We did sixty thousand dollars last month and our credit card folks, the folks that handle our credit card payments always do a charitable contribution to any charity that we choose. And our charity of choice, of course, is Shop With A Cop. And this month, they donated a hundred and eighty-two dollars to the Shop With A Cop. They do that every quarter. They do ten percent of whatever their proceeds are that they've collected for us, but I really think it's, I think it's ten percent. I'll check with them on that and see what it is because I'm, I'm sure that they're collecting a whole lot more than what that ten percent is. Wait a minute, because we get a lot of money from credit cards. We started out this year, like I said, with sixty thousand dollars opposed to last January, which was just about half of that. It was thirty-two thousand dollars. And I contribute that to my two ladies I have working with me right now. They do a great job. And they're, after these folks, when they come in to set up time pays, they, they encourage them to make a down payment while they're there. So that does help in the long run. And they're doing a great job on doing, just helping me with collections and that sort of thing. We've gone through the time payment drawer. If you could have seen what that thing looked like, it was a one full file cabinet, well, four drawers full of people on time pay. And we've gone through there and weeded those out and got rid of things where people have paid off. We have issued warrants on several people who hadn't paid in a considerable amount of time and sent out a lot of letters to folks and they just forgot to pay. So we had all that coming in this month too. So all that's been done. One thing that was mentioned, I think, I would like to mention too, is last month, our total proceeds last year, our total collections was five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which is, it's a considerable amount of money. But I just wanted to let everybody know that I did a breakdown on that today just to show you and anybody else that was interested that on that collection, the city gets to keep less than half of that amount of money. We keep fines and we keep fees. And that's really about the only things that we get to keep. The city fines last year totaled a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. And then fees on their total sixteen thousand dollars that the city itself got to keep, that went into the city general fund for a hundred and forty-five thousand out of that five hundred and sixty. And then the court itself got to keep eighty-three thousand dollars. I get to keep a portion of the cost.
You do?
The, the court does. Yeah, I do personally. I wish. It's been my baby for so long, it's mine. The court gets to keep five thousand nine hundred and forty dollars every month off of cost. It doesn't matter if we collect twenty-four thousand dollars in cost or ten thousand dollars in cost. I get five hundred or five thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. The state says I can keep eighty-three hundred total, but I have to share that with the county. So the county gets their twenty-four hundred, I get my fifty-nine hundred and, you know, we go shopping. Then on the fees, I get to keep, you know, like this one. On those time pays that we were collecting, the state has me charge a ten dollar fee every month if somebody has an account with us. It's their handling fee. Out of that ten dollars, the court gets to keep two dollars and fifty cents. The rest of it goes to the state. So part of that fee money there, that twelve thousand dollars is collected two dollars and fifty cents at a time. And there's also garnishment fees in there if somebody has a civil case and they're garnishing someone's wages or a bank account, there's garnishment fees. There are fees for sealing records and fees for preparing, preparing appeal transcripts, that sort of thing. And appeal transcripts will cost someone five dollars. So I'm collecting this two dollars and fifty cents at a time or five dollars at a time, or sometimes ten dollars at a time. But out of that five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, the court is keeping eighty-three thousand. And that's why we rely on the city for sales tax to help keep us afloat. Because there's a state statute that says the court cannot keep any funds for itself. So we're not a money-making proposition for the city. Never have been, probably never will be. And you don't want that in your justice system. You want justice. You don't want me making money from whatever's going on. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
So I think one of your calculations is off in your year-to-date.
It usually is.
It looks like you just had some numbers from last month in our year-to-date.
You know, I tried to check that, but I'll check it again.
Call on I, but since we've got kind of a long meeting tonight, I'll wait. But next month, Dina is really wanting, and I know the rest of the council is too, just a kind of a summary of how to read this report.
Okay. I guess it would be a little easier to read.
So anyway, we'll get her through to the next, next meeting.
I think my second page kind of has a little script on what the abbreviations on there are.
Yeah, it does. But just, just kind of showing her where, what, what's coming to the city and what's going to the state, what's going to the county, that type of thing. So that when she looks at it, she can provide a better understanding to her. I know I can always use a refresher course on this.
Well, that's kind of why I did this, the spreadsheet that I did today. It has each month on there and it was broken down so you could see what was collected and where.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Any questions?
Control over anyway, so...
Just scribble on it.
It's just numbers.
If I want to hold her to a budget though, I need to be able to know what the numbers are, right?
Well, and that January eighteen, that was the first month of January. So our year-to-date on January eighteen, that would have been thirty-two in both places. Because over here on the disbursements for this month, we dispersed sixty thousand dollars. So our year-to-date at the moment is sixty thousand dollars.
Yes. No, I'm talking about call on I where it's year-to-date and it's got thirteen hundred and sixty-three. But last year, year-to-date was seventy-six.
Yep.
So I...
Oh, I switched them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I better switch those, man.
Any other questions for Paulette?
You can just relabel those at the top. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Nelson?
All right, I already, I went over service calls. There were three hundred and ninety-four. We took thirty-six reports. Fifty-one warrants were served and we made five arrests. I think a lot of that was in reference to comments that were made on Facebook also as far as breaking down money. And, and I think there was a comment about that we were trying to meet our quota as far as citations. I always tell you guys how many citations. I don't, I don't really talk about contacts. Maybe I should. We wrote a hundred and four citations. If you break that down, my guys work twelve-hour shifts, that which means they work about sixteen days a month on those twelve-hour shifts. It's about one ticket per officer, per shift. There was also some other comments about exhaust systems. I call those fix-it tickets. Let me, our officers, if you have no exhaust on your vehicle, no muffler, I'm sorry, no muffler, they're going to stop you. The first time they stop you, they're going to warn you that you need that muffler. They're loud, they're annoying, people complain about. The second time, if you refuse to fix the muffler, they may receive a citation for that. On the second time, if they take that citation down to this court and they show that that has been fixed, that ticket is dismissed. So these times that we're, we're actually going through with citations would be their third attempt or their third warning to fix that problem. This is not something that we're just going out and harassing and looking for mufflers. I think last year total, there was a total of six citations written. Six or seven citations written, and I believe three or four of those were dismissed because they fixed it. If you skip over, if you look at the school resource officer report, I would really like you guys in your free time to take some time to look at the upcoming and long-term goals. We've got the state recommendations. And our SRO has taken great amount of time in trying to put some things together with the school. We're going to continue to do that. We're going to continue to try and follow regulations. We've got some, or recommendations. We've got some site surveys we'd like to, to do. And a lot of this has to do with the school and what they want done, but some site surveys. And we want to ensure one hundred percent of the school is Alice-trained. We've also been over to Farmington to watch how they're doing some things. And we've also went to Prairie Grove where they're putting in a new system, an expensive system, I believe, currently, if I'm wrong, it's about six thousand dollars. Six hundred to seven hundred dollars a year. But what that system would do is if there was a shooting, if there was something that happens at school, there's a live feed that's going to show us where the shooter's at, where the problem is at all times. That's also going to feed through a PA system and go to the teachers. So if you have a shooting on this end of the building or a problem, that allows the teachers on the other end of the building to evacuate and leave to a safe site. That would also allow us to know if there's any injured kids, where exactly they're located and how to get to them safely. So that's some things that we're looking up, looking at, but it all is, boils down to money. Do you have the money? And that's, that's one of those things that, that's just, we either do or we don't. We just have to see. I want to kind of, Riley here, yeah, I want to congratulate him. He just took his basic and advanced precision rifle course. He came in top gun. He was number one in the class. So we were, we were happy with that. And beyond that, do you guys have any other questions for me? Yes?
On your eleven citations issued for the passing of the school buses, is that normal or is that...
That would be a little high, I believe.
It's a little high. It's normally about half that, I would say.
That's high. But we have made the effort. And then that also came across that we weren't. I know Officer Dogg particularly has taken time out of his own schedule to come and follow those buses. He comes in early, he leaves late because he feels like it's his responsibility to follow the buses and to watch what they're doing. A lot of that could be because we're out there now. You know, are we going to be sitting in the school zone at five o'clock in the morning? Most likely not. But when school's in session, when the buses are running, we are making an attempt to watch this.
Chief, I would like to commend Officer Riley myself. There were some rumors floating around. I don't think they were all rumors, but there was some, some discussion that Officer Riley is getting recruited. And he heard that I found out about it. And he came by the house personally to tell me that, that that's not the case, that he's happy here. He even commended you, said that he likes his chief. He's not leaving as long as he, as long as you stay chief. And we don't get one that he don't want. But I think it also says a lot of yourself, your leadership, Officer Riley. The fact that somebody's recruiting you means we're doing something right.
That's right. That's right.
I think there's even been some rumors about another one that I've talked to as well. I'll leave his name silent tonight. He didn't come by my house personally.
All right.
I'll mention.
So anyway, thank you guys. Thank you for what you do.
Absolutely.
Awesome therapy. Any questions for Chief? Public Works, Isaac Carson.
We are, we're trying to tidy up some loose ends before, before March. It's going to get really busy for us with, with moving everybody. And we got approval to go ahead and do the Di Creek Bridge. So we're going to start that around the first of March. We are doing our contribution to the INI. We have, we are replacing the pump out here in the back of this building, which has got holes in the lid and leaking water into it. So, so you'll notice that our parking lot's tore up right now. Trying to do that ahead of the contractors coming in. I'm still waiting on our camera. Shouldn't be here Thursday.
That's what you told me last week?
I know. They just keep telling me Thursday. So we'll get some training on that as well as a handheld device so we can do our own updates on our meters that we get. Right now, we are calling Jeff when one of our meters goes down and he comes up and does the update. So he's bringing a handheld, going to train us on that so we can do those updates ourselves. In our, in my packet, we, we talked about going ahead and rehabbing our Tower Street tank up here as part of our sanitary survey, having, getting our tanks inspected. That's going to be our cheapest one to do this year. So, and we're, we're trying to get all the money that we can to, to chase INI down. So that, that will start in March two as well. So we'll have somebody rehabbing our water tank and, and the Di Creek Bridge project going as well. So, so we're going to get busy in March. Other than that, I don't have any other questions. I'm going to let Nick come up and give you all a heads up on the sewer because we have, we've had a couple of meetings with Fayetteville and such. So I'm going to let Nick talk about that.
We're going to do that now or during?
I'm just going to let him give you an update on, on kind of where we're at and, and where we're headed with the easements and the appraisals and stuff like that. So, unless y'all have anything else for me.
One thing, William, one of the things you mentioned was what are we doing to, to find this INI that's getting into the system? That's what Isaac was talking about. So the city has not, we don't own a camera. So we've had to hire someone to come in. When we've, you know, we, we try to narrow down the section and we hire someone to come in and run a camera through the lines. We've actually purchased a camera. We're waiting on it to get here so that we can, as Isaac identifies spots, he can look at them immediately instead of having to hire somebody and wait for them to schedule to come down. So... And see where that would be a role?
We'll, we'll be able to do sewer mains, sewer services. We should be able to do everything. So, so we can help track that down. And yes, Nancy, I know y'all live in a swamp down there. We are, we got a main that we're fixing to replace there and it'll probably be August before we can get back there. So, so...
Just due to the water, the weather?
Yeah. Yeah, it just stays saturated back there year-round. So...
And you are at the bottom of the hills. I mean, it all...
But if you don't have anything else for me, I'll let Nick.
Howdy.
He makes Nick.
What's that?
Well, Isaac's going to get the camera, but I guess you're the one that has to go down with the camera, any of the pipes.
Yeah. No. I don't mind going in, but I don't think I'll fit in those pipes. Yeah, that's okay. That's why I bought a camera to go up there so we don't have to go in there and look at it. But as far as an update on the, on the sewer project, Isaac said we've had some meetings with Fayetteville. We started talking to them about a couple of items, about the lift station site. Since they're going to be operating and maintaining, it'll be owned by West Fork, but operated by Fayetteville, what they're going to want to see there, what kind of equipment and valves and pertinences they need in the site layout, how it's going to look. So we've gotten some direction from them there. And we've also talked to them about the cost share at the end of the line, where it ties in at the jail site. I think we've, they, they have agreed that they want to participate in a cost, cost share there, which they'll pay for the, the difference between what West Fork would need and what Fayetteville needs. So it's a kind of a win-win for, for us to, to do that with them. So moving forward with that. And they're, like you mentioned, they're, they're, I think it's their water committee tonight that's meeting. Tim told me that they're putting the contract in front of the committee tonight and then it will go to their council next Tuesday for approval. But that's moving forward. And we're, we're charging ahead with easements and appraisals. I think we've already got four appraisals done and we're getting ready to send out some letters to some owners. And we're going to keep chugging away. And we've got another batch of ten easements we're getting ready to do right now too. I talked to my surveyor this morning. We're meeting tomorrow to get those ready to go and turn those loose to the appraisers. So we've got a, a lot of items to do. We've got a short fuse here. And this is, you're well away with the ANRC as they're pushing. And we're pushing too, to get it done. So...
So this project... So this project, we're involved with ADQ and ANRC. And we originally met with them, what was that, six months ago or something? We set up a tentative schedule with them, and they came back last month. It was this month. My days are starting to hang together this time of year, but, so they came back, and they had their schedule that they had sat down and went over with us, that they wanted us to meet. At one point, I kind of stopped the guy, and I said, "So are you basically trying to speed up the schedule that you set originally?" And he said, "Yes." So they are, they're wanting to spend the money. They're wanting to get this project underway, and so the state's pushing us even past the original schedule that they set for us, so.
Maybe I should forgive some more money to give us some incentive to hurry up.
I think I'm almost offended that we're forgetting. I've pushed pretty hard, man.
I mean, yeah, they want to hurt you.
That's what we've already got.
Take what you can get.
So a couple of things that Nick did for us, if you notice in your packet, we had that cost breakdown of city water and surrounding towns. We had a cost breakdown of city sewer and surrounding towns. I think, if I'm not mistaken, on water, we're currently toward the low end. If you look at Greenland, Elkins, Prairie Grove, Lincoln, and Farmington, we're toward the lower end for our charge for water. And then on sewer, I want to say we were on the lower end in sewer as well. Or toward the middle at any rate. So I felt good about that. It's unfortunate that we have to, you know, raise our rates, but I think we'll see some other cities. Prairie Grove is doing a sewer expansion currently, or I guess they're getting ready to. Their rates, they're going to be in the same boat as us, and the rates are going to go up to do that. I think you were telling me one town passed sales tax ordinance to.
Yeah, Greenland has. They're getting ready to do some similar improvements. We're working with them right now, but they've had sales tax to do some of that. So they're trying to get ahead of the curve a little bit, but they're about to have to spend quite a bit of money, you know, upwards of one and a half, $2 million on their system.
And then Nick also provided for me, and I didn't get this in the packet, but I was curious, how much water does a household use? So I know how much water the city uses. We sell roughly 3.7 million gallons a month of water, okay? That equates to roughly 40 million gallons a year. That's what people are buying in the city of West Fork every year, 40 million gallons, which astounded me. But Nick gave me some averages across the nation, and this is, it's what he does. He's an engineer, but he pulled this across the nation. They use this as a rule of thumb that in a house, you'll use 50 gallons per person per day. So just an idea, you know, I'm always complaining at my daughter, who's back there in the back, to hurry up and get out of the shower. But that's just kind of the average. A four-person household will use roughly 6,000 gallons a month. So that's something to, just something to know. I found it interesting to know that, kind of see where my family, how my house was falling in that average, so. Any other questions for Nick? Thanks for being this dad of course.
Oh, no problem. Well, I didn't think, him back there, David, young engineer, he's good with the numbers and did a great job pulling that information together. We had to chase that out of ANRC and harass him a little bit to get those numbers so we could present them to you guys, so. But yeah, we're moving forward fast. Like you mentioned, we've got a public hearing coming up, March 26th. Well, one on the 5th and then one on the 26th for the actual, we'll present the alternatives and all that. Like you mentioned, I'll encourage the public to come. We'll have a whole presentation and go through everything, so we can see how we got to where we are. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Nick. So that reminds me of something else. One of the, I think there was another comment. People were concerned that we were looking to annex to bring more people into the city to pay for this.
Core order.
And so that, again, that was false. We're not looking to annex. We haven't talked about annexing anyone. Well, I shouldn't say that. At the water sewer meeting, I did speak about annexation. We had, is it?
Don.
Who is the homeowner association president of the Homestead Housing Edition of the town. And they are actively participating in the sewer project and tie on to the sewer when it goes through there. When we were talking, I did ask her if they would want to annex into the city. We don't know if they even can. That's a question for Jeff Hawkins when he comes to your meeting next week. They are in Greenland's planning district. However, the sewer would be cheaper for them if they annex into the city. So we currently, every city does, if you're outside the city limits and we provide you sewer or water, there's an extra fee associated with that because you're outside the city limits. And so I think that obviously that's going to be a decision for the council to make, whether or not we annex them, if it's a possibility. But I wanted to bring that up to her, that hey, you know, this is something that we should look into. It could save your residents in that subdivision money if you guys do annex. But other than that, we're certainly not looking to annex anybody south of town. The sewer system is not going south of town. It is all going north, straight to Fayetteville, seven miles. So if there's any talk about annexation, know that the planning commission, and you guys are well aware that we haven't talked about it here, so, again, I don't know where some of that came up with.
Now, they're not in our growth?
No, it's kind of a weird thing. Actually.
We get a mile.
We get a mile, and so they get a mile, and there's not a mile in between. And I think it was Nick told me that they actually moved the city limit around the time that that went in. Was that you, Nick? Or Isaac, maybe? Somebody told me that those growth areas kind of got, they shrunk a little bit when that subdivision went in. Our city limits moved back a little bit, so I don't know what we can do there, but it's a question for Jeff Hawkins. And we probably need to speak with the mayor of Greenland. It was just a thought, to try to save them some money if they tie into our system, so.
Do they have any property they touch? Do they have a fine place in the middle?
There's one in the farm in between them.
Yeah, that person, you have to bring him in for an election, which I foresee as well. If it needs a will, to get that in, it's reasonable. The existing subdivision is not. So without touching it, you can get along, too.
All right. Parks Director Harris, I think you have the only budget that's out of budget.
Yeah, he's probably right. I've been waiting for January. I wanted to add a couple of things on the, about the sidewalks at Riverside before we move on to anything else. For one, I did a little research, and Tom might be able to correct me on this, but I couldn't find anything as far as state or local laws that were specific to how wide a sidewalk need to be to be used as a bike trail as well. But it is a safety issue. The majority of our sidewalks at Riverside are six feet. It's just not wide enough to be served as a bike and a walking trail. I do know that for the Razorback Greenway Trail, their minimum is eight foot. But they highly recommend 12 feet. And if you want any assistance or grant money or anything to put in a trail, you're going to do a 12-foot trail. It's just not feasible for a six-foot sidewalk to handle traffic of pedestrians and bicycles. And that's why it's in there. Also, I wanted to address our signs that do say that bikes and skateboards and those things are allowed in the parking lot. That is not intended. Sorry. That's not intended to encourage necessarily to let your kids play in the parking lot or to ride their bicycles in the parking lot. It was, the original signs that were put down there said, "No skateboards, no bicycles in the park." They were modified to allow, mostly to allow access to the park. You can ride your bike down there. But it does also allow if, on, when the park's not busy, whether it be Riverside or Carter Park, that you could go down there and utilize the parking lot to let your kids ride around if it's not busy, responsibly, of course, supervised. So, because, I mean, during the off-season at Carter Park, it's a great time to go down there and let your kids ride around during the day when there's not a lot of activities or games going on. So it does allow for that, but it's mainly put in to be in access to the park. That's why that's, it's not, we're not trying to encourage you to just let your kids go ride in the parking lot unsupervised. That's not what it intended for. So that's about all I got on that, I think. There's probably more, but. Do y'all have any more questions about this sidewalk issue at Riverside? Okay. There's also come up recently is some more parking issues down there, and I've talked to Chief Nelson and Chief Myers as well, and we're going to add some additional striping down there to designate our no parking zones a little bit better. We have our parking spots pretty well designated. But to also allow for better, maybe a fire lane and some better emergency services access to make sure those areas aren't blocked, so they can get in there, whether it be some type of emergency. So we're going to add the striping there as well, hopefully in the next few weeks. We're looking at, well, doing some maintenance work on that parking lot, some sealing and restriping stuff. So at that time, that's probably when we'll take care of that as well, adding those. So, and then also, just on the rest, I was able to get some minutes in there. A couple of things I wanted to point out. Our meeting that is in our minutes, it says it's scheduled for tomorrow. I had to move that to next Tuesday just to do, to members not be able to make, most of our members couldn't make our meeting tomorrow. So we have rescheduled that for next Tuesday. We got our dugout roofs replaced this last month, and they were, they're needing it very bad. Probably should have been done already, but they have been replaced, and we went with metal roofing that's going to last and protect those dugouts a lot better as well. We're looking, a couple of other projects down there, getting some pricing on a possible PA system as well. I don't know if that's going to be feasible cost-wise, but we are, I met with a guy again today and trying to come up with cheaper options that we could still. And that's really beneficial more to our 4th of July event, as we all know from last year. A lot of us over there, being able to announce, "We have a lost kid," and things like that, so. And then, other than just trying to prepare for the season, because it's pretty much good in here, and I've had maybe three or four days when those fields aren't wet. We were able to get in there and add some dirt to some of them, but I haven't got to work them as well as I. But hopefully, sometime the rain has to stop, I hope, so. And then sign-ups are going well. We're probably, we're probably somewhere close to a third of what we expect to sign up, but we usually get most of those the last few days of sign-ups, so preparing for that. And I think that was pretty much everything that I had.
You have a couple of new ideas in the park?
Yes, we do, and those are in your minutes as well. Those are both in the, you know, research stage at this point, but I think they're both great ideas, and I think they can both be done fairly cheap, as far as that goes, and would add some things to our park system.
Keeping everybody in suspension.
The biggest one is possibly adding a dog park. And we're looking at doing that possibly at the community center, utilizing that field that doesn't get a lot of use right now. It's already fenced-in area. We feel like we might be able to do that inexpensively. And I think that'd be a great addition to our park system, and something that we could do fairly, reasonably priced at this point. We can always add to it as we go down. Still in really the research, and now that we're starting to get busy, it's probably going to be later in summer before you see a whole lot moving on that, but it's definitely in the works. And then also Frisbee Golf Course on the north part of Carter Park. And that's kind of been in the works for longer, but it kind of got put on the back shelf for a little while, but we're starting to do that, is research into that. Well, really, our goal is to get that done sometime this summer, both of those projects.
Chad, how many kids participate in the ball project, the ball field? How many kids do we have on those?
In my program, we will have, last year, I think we had 255 kids signed up in the program. And that's spread over 22 teams, I think, 22, 23 teams is what we had last year. And then, of course, the high school teams play down there as well. And then, of course, all the towns that that attracts and the kids that come in. But in our program, we have about 250 participants.
Do you know how many kids are in the school?
K through 12?
Yeah.
I know a thousand or so.
So we're roughly, there's about 30 kids in the district that participate, and I'm just curious about how many kids we were serving.
Yeah, it varies, but it's usually 250-plus, somewhere in that range.
Any other questions for Chad?
Well, like on the dog park thing, I don't know, but what about, because that's going to be like more like a senior center now by after renovation?
I don't know.
Oh, really? Okay. And then, you know, the school does use that some, the elementary during the, they take walking trips, and, you know, they do use that.
And that's something that we will consider in our research as well.
People that would rent that facility, and then the kids that would be around there in the neighborhood, I just, you know.
Well, it wouldn't affect as far as the, we would leave the playground equipment and all that and the pavilion stuff intact. You would lose a little bit of space for kids that maybe are going in there to play. And we use it a little bit for overflow practices and some T-ball practices as well. So all those things will be taken into consideration. But I think year-round, I think it would serve the community better than what it's getting right now, because you do have some of that, but there are also other areas in the town that you can do that as well. There's a small T-ball field up by the school, as well as Mueller Park as well. So there's areas like that, but we really don't have a fenced-in area that, and you're not talking about, it's probably not going to be like 20 dogs down there at once or anything like that, but it would be an area where someone could take their dogs, let them off their leash, run around in a pending area. So that's kind of what we're looking at.
I didn't mean to say that it wouldn't be for seniors, but.
I think that's, the seniors are excited, thinking that they're going to have a new facility.
And I've talked to those that use it quite a bit, but I think overall, the idea is not to make that a senior center or a senior citizen center, but make it more usable to everyone, being only including anyone else who wants to have anything there.
Again, I don't think that that would affect a lot of the use that's going on down there right now. Because we would try to keep anything outside fences still. It just wouldn't be usable as a ball field anymore, necessarily.
I know the kids that play kickball and stuff, and it's safer to go there than Riverside Park, because you don't want kids, you know, into that river. So I know the elementary uses that, you know, the different grades.
Yeah. Well, that's a good point, and something to consider, for sure.
And I feel like that what's pumped at this is trying to get people off of the ball fields and, you know, maybe.
Yeah, that's part of it, because a lot of people go down there and, because it's the only fence.
I don't really know that it will solve those problems. I think that people are just, you know, going around walking. Those are more, in my mind, dog walkers versus people that are actually looking for.
No, I think a lot of it is people that are specifically going down there for an area for their dog, a fenced-in area, that they can let their dogs run without, you know, worry of either getting a ticket for them being off their leash or for them running off or getting hit by a car or something. You have a lot of people going down there, and that is part of it. But I think, you know, the bigger thing is just something else to offer the community. A designated spot, something else for the park system to offer the community is more.
Just one of them, would you say?
Yeah, no, I'm glad you did. And I'll say Chad and his committee, they've been looking for, what can the city of West Fork offer in the way of parks? What can we provide? There's a lot of people that want things down at Riverside. The problem is it floods at least once a year. And so we're kind of limited to what we can do because of the maintenance cost that is going to come with putting something down there. We know it's going to flood once a year. How deep are those benches dug into the ground?
A long way.
And he still has picnic paddling. They're checking down, right? Because they flood it off. The reason it's a problem is it's flooding.
Well, yeah, and Misty and I have discussed, um, volleyball court down there, but.
I, I would love it too. It's just.
I don't even play.
You'd have to do it once a year, put it back up.
And I said we wouldn't have to use sand. You could just, you know, leave it the grass and dirt. I don't play, but in the summer I go down there and walk and there's people with their little tippers. Is what made me think of that.
And so, his, his group's putting a lot of, they've been working on North Carter for a while now, trying to figure out what, what can they do that they would suit, uh, the biggest, uh, you know, portion of the community they can out there. So, uh, I'm, I'm glad to see you guys have come up with some ideas and moving, you know, in, in that direction.
Yeah, and for North Carter, there's lots of things we'd like to do down there, but again, it's not cost-effective, you know, to go in there. It'd be great to, uh, to put a amphitheater or some day-use pavilions along the river and different things like that, but it takes money. And so, we're looking at natural walking trails and Frisbee Golf and those things that are, could still utilize the space, but that are a little less expensive, or a lot less expensive.
And we're still, we still don't know what's gonna happen with the sewer plant. Will it be possibly incorporated into North Carter at some point once it's deconization? We don't know, so.
And it, that might be a great place for a dog park, who knows? But, uh, I won't say that the field at the community center's not getting used, but it's not being utilized well, so.
Any other questions for Chad? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank y'all.
Chief Myers?
I know everybody likes me. I'm not gonna hold you up. Um, cold and flu season's been kicking our rear. I mean, it's going around bad, so it's, most of our calls have been that this year. Heard this last month. Three house fires we had, we're all in the rural area. None of them were in the city limits. Rain has pretty well killed our wildfire season this year, which, everybody hates the rain, but it's helped us a lot. So, uh, other than that, I really don't have a lot. If you guys have any questions for me.
Thank you, sir.
It's just bad I don't have their job, you know?
Don's anxious to get back to work. All right, Kristy.
Thank you, Kristy.
This January, I don't have much either, so. Uh, as far as budgets go, there's a couple of them that show over budget, but I don't worry about that a whole lot in January. That usually works itself out. Um, the two expenses that I did wanna point out on the, uh, city's income and expense report, um, the outside services had a large, um, payment to the architect for $23,000. Um, I think off the top of my head, we still owe him like another 40. Um, but that's what that payment was. And then, under the retirement, uh, the beginning of each year, we transfer approximately $25,000 into another bank account to pay out a city clerk retirement. Um, so those are what those two large expenses are and what would cause the city to be over budget for, starting in January. So, those will even themselves out. But other than that, I don't have anything else unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Kristy?
A reminder while I think about it too, our, uh, council meetings in March will start at the fire department.
All right, moving on. Old business. Approve the contract with on-time appraisal, appraisal services for our sewer line project. Uh, I believe we discussed this at the last meeting. Uh, the, uh, we, I say we, Nick's group has hired an appraiser, to, to do those appraisals, uh, easement that we're, we're having to get for the sewer line. And I was, I was excited when we met with, uh, Mark Bennett, uh, last month. The, the guy from the state, the main guy that is in charge of giving out the money for this, knew the appraisal, uh, the appraiser and was happy that, that, uh, we brought them on, so.
That's a plus.
Yeah. Uh, he, he talked about how efficient they were and so I thought that was a plus. So, we just need to approve that contract. Do we have a motion from the mayor or the other?
To approve it.
Okay. Motion in second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Uh, next up, new business. Uh, approve for the mayor to enter into negotiations for the contracts on the capital approval, improvement projects. Did we get anything in here, Kristy, on that? Um, so we did have our bid opening. We do have the bids. They are tabulating them. We have some rough numbers, um, as far as what, what the three projects are gonna cost. I was excited that the courts actually came in under budget. Uh, the library, we knew it was over budget. It was projected to be over budget. It is. And the community center was a little bit over budget. Uh, they are still trying to narrow down, uh, so we, we hired Boltwood Schell to be our construction manager. What they're doing now is looking at those low bids, maybe, uh, they said the scariest thing is not what the company bid, but what they forgot to bid or what they left out of the bid for one reason or another. So, uh, we should have those numbers tomorrow. We're meeting with them and we should have some solid numbers. Uh, Kristy can shoot an email out, uh, letting you guys know where those come in. But we, we do know, uh, we feel confident this is under budget. Uh, we knew the library was over budget and community center is, is gonna come in.
So, overall, it will be under budget?
Overall, we're, we're over budget overall. Uh, however, uh, we feel pretty good about where we're at and before we budgeted, uh, some extra, uh, funds out of the general fund to cover those, those overages. Just so everybody in the, the audience knows, uh, what we're talking about. So, roughly three years ago, we, we, uh, passed a sales tax, uh, in Westport to, uh, fund remodeling this building, remodeling the library and making an addition to the library and remodeling the community center building. And so, we are, those, some of those are coming in over budget, but for something that was put into place three years ago, we're, we're in pretty good shape, honestly. Uh, we're not so far out of budget that, that it's scary, like something was missed. It looks like over time prices have went up and, uh, you know, it was a best guesstimate at the time when we secured those bonds, so. That's kind of where we're at on that. So, any questions concerning that? Uh, and I will, I am happy to report, we had, what, close to 100 bids, maybe more than that?
There was a bunch.
There was a bunch. It was a lot of that envelope. So, for those three, uh, projects, uh, and I don't know, we were up there for several hours opening, uh, envelopes, uh, and, and the construction company was, was encouraged by that. Uh, and we had a lot of local, uh, even while we were there waiting for the time, uh, you know, the, the final minute, right? They had to get it in by a certain time. We still had local folks, uh, showing up, dropping off bids, so that was, that was encouraging as well. Do we have a motion from the mayor or another on, on this?
That's where we're at.
To, uh, to approve that. I'm sorry, uh, to approve the mayor to go into no.
I'll make this motion.
I'll make it.
All those in favor say yes. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number two, I'm sorry. Item number two, introduce the proposed water and sewer ordinances.
So, tell me, those are in the packet. We have to introduce them, then have a public hearing and then consider them at the next meeting. And so, you would entertain a motion to introduce those ordinances, uh, making clear in the record that they're, you know, on file here at the city, or with Kristy's office, I'm sure, and then here as well tonight. And then, you know, have a motion to introduce them and then, you know, have a, and we'll have a discussion at the, at the public hearing here. Yes, sir. You could, it's early discussion. You think you'd have to discuss them tonight, you know, but you can continue to if you like. And, uh, and then, of course, we'll have a public hearing on it, Mr..
Okay. Okay.
That one he said.
That's what I was gonna, I think.
I'll second. Okay, so we have a motion in second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. Uh, item three, schedule a public hearing for the sewer rate increases on March 5th at 6 o'clock at the fire station. Is there any discussion on that?
Uh, kind of. Why are we doing a March the 5th and the 26th? Can we not combine those?
The state says no, you cannot. We asked about it. Uh, so it's, it's two separate, uh, public hearings and then the state said no, stay two separate public hearings. And part of it too was a scheduling issue.
The, the sewer use ordinance had to be published for a longer, a longer period of time where the rate would, the rate ordinance is 10, 10 days before the meeting and I think the sewer use one, Nick, can, I think it's 30 days.
So, if we can have that. Good question. So, do we have a motion concerning that or are there any other questions?
I make a motion to schedule, right?
Take.
Pretty much all of them.
Motion in second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Next is to schedule a public hearing for the facility plan, EIB, on March 26th at 6:00 PM at the fire station.
I make a motion to do it.
Second.
Okay. Motion in second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. Item five, approve the contract for sewer services with the city of Fayetteville. I expect you guys read every word of that.
I did.
Did you? Twice?
Was it recommended by the city?
Yes. I do believe so. Water and Sewer Committee did have a recommendation on that.
Yes.
Yes.
That's been recommended by the, that you guys are gonna have to do that as well.
Yeah, we would've used that.
Two months ago, I think.
Maybe longer than that. It's, I don't know. It's kind of just been set in idle.
Yeah.
Been a while.
And as Nick said, uh, the Fayetteville Water and Sewer Commission is reviewing it tonight. Um, and the passage will, will push that on to, to Fayetteville City Council for approval.
We, you know, we've volleyed that back and forth, but then we get the language right, so it's, it's kind of been settled for, I don't know, a year. Yeah, almost a year. It was February last year when we were, we were down the final language.
Any questions concerning that? Do we have a motion?
I'll make it.
Okay. Approved it. Okay, let's take it. Put a motion in second. All those in favor say yes. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Review disposal of property approval for the library. Then we have a full list of everything that's coming out there.
I noticed I didn't get that list. It is not in the package.
Oh, is it?
This is 900 items.
I'm sorry. I saw.
Not in the package.
I have seen the list.
Yeah. It is here. If anybody actually wants to look at it, there's 900 items on it, so we didn't have it in there.
Well, and I, I love the writing, uh, like that it has no market value of less than, you know, or no monetary value and then we're over here at $20,000.
That's what the law requires us to do is if it's more than that, we have to, to auction it basically to take bids on it. But if less than that, we can dispose of it.
And so, uh, Shannon can speak to that if you have questions about what it is, but it's, it's mostly stuff. She's, she's went through and purged to, to see what has been checked out. Some of that stuff hasn't been checked out in years, I think, right?
Yeah, right now, it's, it's not relevant. If it's pretty rough where we can't help it out with the new recovery, um, and past three years have checked out. So, a lot of things, it hasn't been cleansed in a while. So, we're just starting with three years. If we still have a lot of things, then we'll go to two years. But this is just the three-year mark, so.
Any other questions concerning that?
Do you want to look at that stuff?
Do you want to take it, sort it or?
I'm not.
Misty wants to look at the vehicle.
Misty, to, to answer your question, I think some of that stuff's going to the friends of the library.
Yeah, I've seen that. That's why I'm really open to this.
It really is all.
You're okay with it. Okay. So, do we have a motion concerning that? We have a motion, Misty. Would you like to second it?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
I made the motion.
Chad, anyone?
Thank you.
Next, um, replace a police vehicle. Uh, this would require a budget adjustment from reserves not to exceed $24,000. Chief, do you or Riley want to speak to why we're replacing? Everybody wants Riley to tell us what happened there.
Riley made the news. He, he did a really good job of preserving everything inside the vehicle, but he totaled out the vehicle. They, they, uh.
It wasn't intentional.
They, they found us the vehicle. So, everything inside the Tahoe is still functional. Maybe one light bar across the back. My, the $24,000 would replace the vehicle with what we got back from insurance. I know we didn't get a car at the, at the budget meeting, so I'm hoping to sort it out with Riley later.
So, so a little bit of backstory.
Yes.
When we were trying to finalize budgets, um, we knew that some of these building projects were gonna be over budget. Chief Nelson said, guy, I was planning on replacing some vehicles, uh, and his car dies on him just driving across town. Uh, we knew that the police department needed it. He said, so I'll give that up. I mean, this, these are these guys negotiating in there. I'll give that up, but you have to tell the council that I'm gonna need some repair costs this year for my vehicles. And so, Riley's helped him out and just demolished the car. Riley will give you a bad time, but we are happy you're okay. So, anyway, the chief did, uh, he, he gave up a lot of his budget. This was something he was, he had planned, uh, from a prior year and now we're, now we're happy to do it whether we wanted to or not.
In the first month, so nothing that I'm real crazy about, but we don't have a say in that and it wasn't his fault.
For everyone who didn't see it, Riley was assisting state police out on, uh, 49 during, uh, uh, well, it had some snow and ice or something.
10 or 13th, it was icy on the, just the bridges.
And so, he, he pulled off and, and a car, I guess, was just staring at your lights or something and.
Did you?
Hit him running 70.
Quarter mile and a half.
70.
Issues on, on radar.
72 miles an hour, rear ended him, uh, so.
We're just lucky he's okay.
Yeah. How many days, how many days did he miss for that, chief?
Zero.
Zero days?
He, uh, he called me the next day and, and said, I'm coming to work. And I said, are you sore? Yeah, I'm real sore. I said, well, you don't need to work. And he said, no, I wanna work. I wanna work. So, he fought through it and got right back in there and went to work.
So, the, the insurance money is gonna go to the police department plus this $24,000.
It's not going to the general fund?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
What I'm asking for is the $24,000 and I, it would pretty much replace what we had, is what I'm looking at. And we can still reuse everything that was in that vehicle. It will all still, so we're not having to go out and buy all new lights, all new computer stuff, all new. That's my thought on that. We can go with a better vehicle and use the old stuff, which is still functional, it's still good, instead of going with a cheaper vehicle and paying.
Buy new stuff.
Yeah, new stuff. It's gonna cost a lot of money.
So, you're, you, you did find out the old cage will fit the new.
Yes, from, from what he's telling me, everything, everything would fit.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion in second. All those in favor say yes. If, all those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number eight, Jeff Upton would like to introduce council pay.
Once again.
Once again.
We have $50 in the budget. I will make a motion that, beginning in January, the council makes $50 a meeting attended. And then, next year, it goes to $100 a meeting attended. Not special meetings or budget adjustments or public hearings, just regular meetings.
And, and to make sure I understand it right, you're, you're proposing, uh, pay for the prior month as well.
Yeah.
So, start.
Right, start the first year.
Okay.
Now, is that gonna be paid in one check in December?
I don't care.
We discussed, because some people didn't want it. Like I said, they don't take it. Sign your check and give it to shop with a cop if you don't.
We can still give it to shop with a cop every month.
Yeah. I think, I think I'd rather have it just one check at the end of the year.
That's fine. I don't care how it comes. I just think this body deserves something for the time he put in to do this.
I understand.
So, for everyone that's here.
I'm in some work right now.
A little bit of backstory. Uh, West Fork City Council is unpaid. So, these eight individuals up here, well, they're seven tonight, but, uh, this is our city attorney. He is paying very well. But, but our council, they are up here, uh, volunteering their time. They're, they're here, they're at other meetings. Uh, they are deciding, uh, or helping decide, uh, the vision and the future of West Fork, uh, for better or worse. I don't think anybody here's ever voted yes on something, uh, in spite of the city. Whether you agree with their vote, and sometimes I do and sometimes I don't, but I do know that in their heart, they're, they're trying to do what's best for the city. Uh, so.
Do we not have to take that before the people?
No.
No, and we are the only council in the state of Arkansas that does not get paid.
But that's called public service.
I, I just wanted to bring that up. So, there's nothing wrong in getting paid. We are the only council in the state of Arkansas.
You're gonna bug this out. I'm gonna say.
Hang on, one at a time.
Volunteer.
Volunteer firemen made out of the city, $11,000, just short of $11,000 last year. And nothing against the firemen. They deserve what they get. But we do this every month, the same as they do, and we get two bucks, other than this public service. So...
I will second your motion.
I don't know, I don't know if you made one yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was in...
$50 and then $100 next year.
How can we decide what we're going to get next year when we don't even know what the budget will be next year?
Well, he, we didn't know we was getting it, and it was put in the budget this year. He just wants it put in the budget next year.
So it has to be voted on the budget for this year, not next year?
That is a good point.
Why can't you vote on it next year when it's not here yet?
Well, if there's...
With the recommendation, then...
Okay, we can, let's just do it this way. I'll change, I'll change it. We'll make a motion for $50 a month, starting in January, for the county. And then we'll discuss whatever for next year.
Would you second the amended motion?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion as second. Is there any other discussion? Okay. So let's do a roll call, just because if they get tied, if they had the last time. Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
No.
John Collins?
Yes.
Karen Hungate?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
Joe is absent, so motion carries.
Nina, I am so sorry. I'm not official. I don't even have a name thing. See, I don't have a vote.
Nina, what is your vote, ma'am?
Um, yes.
Okay. So motion carries? I apologize.
It's all right.
You know what would have happened?
I would have gotten thrown at me if Anita was still sitting over there.
And she was kind of sitting back and you couldn't see her.
Buy a little more aggressive.
So we've got a motion as second, and we voted, and it passed. Do we still have that in the budget? Okay.
Can we ask?
So now, a question. Is it going to be paid once, or how do, do we discuss that, or leave it up to the individual?
Let's do it one or the other. That way Christie's not writing checks to one, trying to keep...
I don't care. It'd be easier once, wouldn't it?
I'd rather do most of them.
So I guess we need to, we've got our, we've got that passed, so now we need a motion as to how you guys are going to get paid.
I vote, I vote...
How about a motion?
I make a motion, we get one check in December after our December meeting.
I'll second that.
For the ones we've attended.
Okay?
I have a question about that.
Yes, sir.
Well, a couple. One is, I know that we already do some pretty big payouts in December. Is that going to make it harder?
It's in the budget.
I'm asking, but I don't know. And the other is, will it make much difference on, like, your withholding?
No, it's still the same. I was about to... So I made the motion.
Motion is second. Any other questions?
Can I ask a question, because I just want to verify, this is for regular meetings only?
Yes.
Only if you attended, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so nothing for this, um...
No.
Public hearing.
No. That's your fair...
So we have a motion as second, that we pay these out in December. One-time payment in December. I think we can, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. So I'll just, a small comment on that. I was a little disappointed in Jeff at the last meeting, and we didn't take any action on that. So I know I cut some... Hang on, because I was the vote.
You was the one that voted for us, I could take action.
Well, but let's keep in mind that...
That we shouldn't have been voting anyway?
Well, no.
Shouldn't have been voting.
I proposed something.
Yeah, there were two things wrong with it. Shouldn't have been voting, and then you cannot vote unless it's to pass something.
It was a tie, and so like...
It was a tie.
Yeah, but you voted no.
Why would he vote if...
It's just, it's just law.
It's not, it's not, and I think the reason I do that, Misty, I don't have to, but I feel like if I'm going to be the mayor, you need to know where I stand, instead of just being quiet and letting something pass. And so the last time we had a tie on the council, if you'll notice, I voted against that as well, and it was a no. And I explained exactly why I was doing it, so that everyone knew that the mayor's not sitting up here just trying to hide behind the council and let you guys take the flag for it. If I have an opportunity, I'm going to cast my vote, and I'm going to tell you why. I think it's the least I've been...
Lawyer, can he vote? Meaning he's the other man to pass something?
He, if the mayor could vote anytime his vote is required to pass an item, yes. And so your votes no, then he basically fails to pass the item. So I could sit here and be quiet and just let it fail, but instead I voice it. You could look at it this way, he could vote no on every vote, but you would never know it, because his vote wouldn't be needed to pass the item. So if he were silent and says, I choose not to vote, you're right, that's a no vote. It's the same thing. So really, it's the same thing either way, whether he says no or says, I choose not to vote.
I mean, I've just read that before, so, but it actually doesn't...
It is. Okay. Fair enough. I think there's one way of looking at it. I think it counts as not voting. It counts as not voting yes, so it's just two ways to look at it. I want you to know where I stand, Misty.
You don't have to say anything.
All right. Item nine, approved police and court items to be destroyed. And we have a list of that. We have a resolution 2019-02. You reckon you didn't realize you were coming to such a long meeting tonight, did you?
I know.
It's normally not like this, though.
It's some type of pressure.
So very private. So are there any questions regarding this, items that are being destroyed?
No, Misty said she'd store them.
Yeah.
That's not an option.
You don't want those anymore.
So just so everyone knows what we're talking about, we've got ticket books up to the year of 2015. Police departments want to get rid of them. They have to, they have requirements to store certain items for a certain period of time. That's why we're stopping at 15. They have to keep 15. Driver's license suspension forms up to the year 2016. Those aren't official records. Case reports dated up to 2011, excluding violent and sexual cases with convictions. Case reports damaged due to age. These cases are from the 70s, 80s, and 90s, and are not in our reporting system. Warrant deletions dated up to 2017. These are not official records and other miscellaneous documents. Any questions concerning any of that?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
So we have a motion as second. All those in favor say yes. Yes. Those opposed, no.
No.
Okay.
You want to take a roll call?
Sure, okay. Yes. So let's do a roll call on that. Misty Cottle?
No.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Karen Hungate?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
Go Tower?
Hey, don't breathe a lot.
I did this time. Dina McKnight?
Yeah.
Okay. So that concludes our... Couple of things, I made this comments, and I'll try to be brief. I did go to the Washington County Regional Ambulance Authority meeting last month. So Washington County's a little bit different than Benton County. Benton County is served by Central EMS for ambulance services, where Benton County has, you know, the Springdale Fire Department, or the Springdale ambulance is through the Springdale Fire Department. Bentonville's much the same, Rogers. So Central EMS serves Washington County. They do Fayetteville. Each town pays, I think it's $2 or $4 per person in the city, so that they provide ambulance service to us, and then they also charge as well for each run. Their budget is in good shape. They're, they're looking to move, so their headquarters is there on South 71 by MLK. That, of course, that property has been purchased and is being developed. There's someone that has offered to help them find a new location. They want to buy their current location, so they're looking to help them find a new location to house headquarters. And I reported this last year, but the Central EMS takes great pride in, they have data to support everything they do. And an average call in a small town, so West Fork, or Greenland, or Elkins, 90% of the time, they are on site within 12 minutes. It's just under 12 minutes. It's like 11.8 minutes they're on site. From the time a call comes in until the ambulance is on the apron ready to pull out is like 30 seconds. It's 28 point something seconds. So they are, they are super focused on the service that they provide, which is why they document everything. They have a live dashboard that you can look at, and you can see ambulance is taking calls, how long it took them to get, you know, in the vehicle and out to the street. So they're doing some amazing things, and it really benefits the small towns like West Fork. You know, we actually have an ambulance station here, and if our ambulance leaves, another one, you know, stages in an area so they can provide support to us. So we're really blessed with the ambulance service that we have and what those guys are doing, not only the EMTs, but admin staff in tracking and monitoring and trying to establish and meet new goals. So that was, that was encouraging. I went to the Washington County Police Chiefs breakfast with Chief Nelson. This is a breakfast they have monthly. Very encouraging there, too, a little bit scary. So I say that because, so you have, you have representation of law enforcement in the state of Arkansas from every, every angle. So there's West Fork Chief, there's all the town chiefs. The sheriff is the one who hosts it, Sheriff of Washington County. Benton County Sheriff comes. Benton County Police Chiefs come. There's representatives from the district court, from the federal courts, from the FBI, from the DI, or DEA, you name it, they're there. See, all of us, they're there. There's even a guy from the military there.